Wait.
You have my outline?
Yes, sir.
Ken, you're good.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. After this meeting of the City University's Board of Trustees is now called to order, I now move that this meeting convene in executive session pursuant to Article VII, Section 105(c), d, e, and f of the Public Officers' Law to discuss matters pertaining to personnel investigations, litigation, and collective negotiations. May I have a second for this? Excellent. Okay, we are in executive session. The board will reconvene in public session following the executive session.
I just want to be intelligent.
All right, we're back in. We are back in public session. Everyone should take a moment to mute their cell phones. CUNY TV is transmitting the public sessions of this meeting live on the CUNY Board of Trustees website at www.cuny.edu/live. I'm going to move directly into, we'll come back at the end with my comments and the chancellor's comments. I'm going to move to items requiring a vote today. Item number one, the minutes of the regular board meeting and executive session of June 24, 2024, and the special board meeting of August 19, 2024. I'd like to move item number one. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? And I move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved. Item number two, the Committee on Governance. Let me call Committee on Governance. Let me call on Committee on Governance Chair Ken Sunshine to present.
Mr. Chairman, the Board Committee on Governance considered the following matters at its meeting on October 28, 2024, which I will now present to the board. Item 2A is a resolution to amend the responsibilities of the president and the duties of the department chairperson and include the roles of the provost and the school academic dean in the City University of New York bylaws and the manual of general policy. Mr. Chairman, item 2A does not require a vote today, but is being presented as the first reading in accordance with Article 5, Section 5.1 of the university's bylaws, which states that the Board of Trustees shall vote on amended bylaws as presented at this calendar meeting at the next regularly calendared Board of Trustees meeting. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number three, the Committee on Finance Administration. Let me call on Committee on Finance Administration Chair Henry Berger to present and move the following items.
My reporting was quite as brief as...
We could have only hoped.
Mr. Chairman, the Board Committee on Finance and Administration considered the following matters at its meeting on October 9, 2024, which I will now present to the board. Item 3A is a resolution to authorize a contract with Allied University Security Services to provide unarmed security and fire guard services at Hunter College. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3A to the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 3B is a resolution to authorize a contract with Dreamland Security Services, Inc., to provide unarmed security guard services at Lehman College. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3B for the board's consideration.
Do you have a second for this item? Any discussion? And I'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 3C is a resolution to authorize a contract maintenance with Cone, Inc., to provide elevator, escalator, and other lift equipment maintenance services to John J. College of Criminal Justice. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3C for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Mr. Chairman, item 3D is a resolution to authorize a contract with the American Museum of Natural History to provide online science courses at the CUNY School of Professional Studies. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3D for the board's consideration.
Do you have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 3E is a resolution to authorize a contract with Attainment Holdco LLC, doing business as Instride, to provide strategic partnerships with industry to enroll corporate employees in online programs and courses at the CUNY School of Professional Studies. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3E for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 3F is a resolution to authorize a contract with Elsevier BV for the Science Direct Package. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3F for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 3G is a resolution to authorize purchase of Nexus for Development Professionals Licenses. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3G for the board's consideration.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 3H is a resolution to authorize a multi-year service contract for unarmed security and fire guard services for as-needed deployment to CUNY campuses. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3H for the board's consideration.
Do you have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Mr. Chairman, item 3I is a resolution to authorize a contract extension with Alucion. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3I for the board's consideration.
Do you have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 3J is a resolution to approve the Personnel Matters Report of the Finance and Administration Committee. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3J for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? Now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 3K through 3 double T are resolutions to appoint regular and interim members of the Executive Compensation Plan. Items K, L, M, N, O, P, and Q from the Central Office include David Gomez as Commissioner of the Civil Service System of the City University of New York, Sharon Hardy as University Dean of Admissions and Recruitment, Ankit Patel, University Dean of Technology and Computer Information Services, Galia Galansky, Associate Vice Chancellor of University Human Resources, Sanjita Bishop as Interim University Dean for Faculty Affairs, Michael Waldman as Interim University Dean for Libraries and Information Resources, and Ann Kirshner as a university professor. Items R and S from the Borough of Manhattan Community College are Julio Isquero as Vice President of Finance Administration, and Teresa Wade, Interim Executive Legal Counsel and Labor Designee. Item T, Bronx Community College, Octavio Gomez as Interim Vice President of Administration. Items U, V, W, and X from Brooklyn College are Paula Massoud as Interim Dean of the School of Visual Media and Performing Arts, Jacqueline Helms, Executive Legal Counsel, Chief Legal Affairs and Labor Relations Officer, James Lynch, Interim Dean of the Kaufman School of Business, Philip Napoli as Interim Dean, School of Humanities and Social Sciences.
Mr. Chairman, one thing. I believe that all of these names are listed in the calendar.
Right.
And I'm sure that if there's...
Thank you.
If there's universal approval, that we can skip the, having you read all of the names and skip to the end on these items, if that meets with your approval.
If there's unanimous consent, certainly.
With unanimous consent, we'll...
Yes.
There we go. We will move...
Thank you.
We will move to the end, because there were another three pages.
Mr. Chairman, I present items 3K through 3 double T for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for these items?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Those items are approved.
Mr. Chairman, I'm pleased to say that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me now... Item number four, the Committee on Education Policy. I call on Committee on Education Policy Vice Chair Henry Berger to present and move the following items.
And you thought you were through with me.
I hope.
Mr. Chairman, the Board Committee on Educational Policy considered the following matters at its meeting on October 9, 2024, which I will now present to the board. Item 4A is a resolution from Medgar Evers College to close the Department of World Languages and Culture, transfer faculty to the Department of English, and rename the Department of English as the Department of English and World Languages. Mr. Chairman, I present items 4A for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? One second, okay. Any discussion on the item? We'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 4B is a resolution to establish the Center for Environmental Justice to enrich and engage NYC at the CUNY Graduate School of Public Health and Health Policy. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4B for the board's consideration.
Do you have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Those, that item is approved.
Items 4C, 1 through 4C, 5 are resolutions requesting appointments with immediate tenure for five, only five, faculty members from three campuses with an immediate application of Bylaw 62B. Hunter College, Sherry Greenberg, John Mario, and Barbara Postmontier, Lehman College, Elizabeth Simon, and the Graduate School of Public Health and Health Policies, Konstantin Yanozos, and I apologize for mispronouncing the names. Mr. Chairman, I move items 4C, 1 through 4C, 5 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for these items?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or... Any opposed or abstentions? Those items are approved.
Item 4D, 1 is a resolution to approve the Faculty Personnel Matters Report of the Educational Policy Committee. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4D, 1 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the item? We'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 4D, 2 is a resolution requesting approval of the actions of the Curriculum and Academic Dashboard Policy Report. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4D, 2 for the board's consideration.
Do you have a second for this item? Any discussion on the item? Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Mr. Chairman, this really concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number five, the Committee on Advancement and External Affairs. Let me call on Committee on Advancement and External Affairs Chair Lorraine Cortez-Vasquez to present and move the following items.
Mr. Chairman, the Board Committee for Advancement and External Affairs considered various naming rights as well as scholarship funds and endowment considerations at the committee meeting of October 9, 2024. And I present to you items 5A through 5Q, I believe, through 5Q for the consideration of this board. Sir, I present them for your consideration.
And again, these are all within the calendar. We can take a look at those to be able to see exactly what they are.
And we're discussing detail if I can read it.
Correct. So, items 5...
A through Q.
5Q.
Yes.
Have been moved forward. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on these items? We'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Those items have been approved. I believe that concludes my report.
Oh, oh, sorry. I believe that concludes my report.
Not at all. Item number six, the Committee on Facilities Planning and Management. I call on Committee on Facilities Planning and Management Chair Brian Oberfeld to present and move the following items.
Mr. Chairman, the Board Committee on Facilities Planning and Management considered the following matters at its meeting on October 9, 2024, which I now present to the board. Item 6A is a resolution to authorize renovation of the HVAC systems at Voorhees Hall at New York City College of Technology at 186 J Street, Brooklyn, New York. Mr. Chairman, I present item 6A for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? And I'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Thank you. Item 6B is a resolution to authorize renovation for the second-floor library renovation project at Hunter College. Mr. Chairman, I present item 6B for the board's consideration.
Do you have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Thank you. Item 6C is a resolution to authorize construction of the medical lab and science programs at Hunter College Main Campus to accommodate decanting programs for the Brookdale campus. Mr. Chairman, I present item 6C for the board's consideration.
Do you have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Okay. Item 6D is a resolution to authorize a lease amendment for the payment of property taxes at 64-19 Cassandra Boulevard, Queens, for Queens College. Mr. Chairman, I present item 6D for the board's consideration.
Do you have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Item number seven is a resolution of appreciation for Salomon Tu Damboya. Before discussion, may I have a second for this item?
Second.
Let it be shown that there was unanimous seconded. Unanimous. Discussion on the item, and I am going to take the privilege of the chair. This is your last meeting?
Yes, it is.
It is... I can't tell you the value and what you have brought to this board. Charm, intellect, division, the ability to see the future in so many different ways, a dedication that I would say, as far as my colleagues, you have done so much to make CUNY a better place on all of our campuses. And I would just, I will miss you. This will not be the last that you see of me. You're going to be stuck going forward, if only because, as I said, I think you are, I think you're fabulous. I think you have a great future, and this city is lucky to have you.
And you can get autographed copies.
Absolutely. And by the way, that will be valuable soon.
Very valuable, very valuable.
Any other comments? Okay. Let's, I guess we're moving to a vote on this. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? None. It has been a pleasure, Salomon Tu. Thank you.
Thank you.
The chancellor's asked the board to consider an additional resolution. I'd like to ask that we consider one in addition to that. I'll ask the secretary to read the resolutions for the record, and we'll first vote to add the item, and then take a vote on the item itself. Gail.
So, resolution number eight is a resolution to approve the engagement of Greenberg-Torrig LLP to provide legal representation in connection with an ongoing litigation matter, whereas the City University of New York is committed to the success of the students of the Stella and Charles Gutman Community College, and whereas the Stella and Charles Gutman Foundation, Inc., provided a gift in 2013 to the university for the benefit of the creation and development of Gutman Community College through a gift agreement, the gift agreement, and whereas the Gutman Foundation has alleged, among other things, that the university violated the terms and conditions of the gift agreement by failing to build a permanent community college in accordance with its terms and is demanding the return of approximately $20 million of gift funds currently held in the university's endowment, whereas it is the obligation of the university to protect and support the successful continuation of studies and the graduation of the students of Gutman Community College and ensuring the support of this innovative approach to community college education and the mission, vision, and values of Gutman Community College. And whereas the Office of the New York State Attorney General has authorized the university to engage a law firm to represent the university in this matter, and whereas in order to protect the mission of the university and the interests of the students of Gutman Community College, the university requires the services of a law firm to assist the university's Office of the Senior Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs and General Counsel to defend against these allegations against the university, whereas the university issued a request for proposals from qualified law firms who could assist the Office of General Counsel in advising and defending the university against such allegations, and the law firm of Greenberg-Torrig LLP met the published qualifications and was the successful respondent, and whereas the Office of General Counsel is seeking the consent of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York to enter into a contract thereby engaging Greenberg-Torrig LLP to provide litigation-related legal services as the Office of General Counsel deems reasonably necessary and appropriate with regard to defending the university against the allegations of the violation of the gift agreement. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees authorizes the Senior Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs and General Counsel to enter into a contract for an amount not to exceed $2 million, and which will have a term of one year from the date of the contract, with an option for the university to renew for a second year with Greenberg-Torrig LLP to represent the university in connection with the alleged contractual breach of the gift agreement and the demand for return of donated funds, and that the General Counsel or his designee be, and they hereby are authorized, to negotiate, execute, seal, and deliver such contract and engagement letter, and that such execution by such duly authorized officer of the university shall be conclusive evidence of his authority to perform all such acts and to execute and deliver all such contracts, agreements, documents, and instruments contemplated thereby on behalf of the university, and be it further resolved that any material changes to the terms and conditions of the contracts, agreements, documents, and other instruments hereby approved by the Board of Trustees shall be submitted to the Board of Trustees for its consideration and approval. Explanation as follows: The university is committed to ensuring the successful continuation of studies and graduation of the students of Gutman Community College and ensuring the support of this innovative approach to community college education, the mission, vision, and values of the Gutman Community College, and has determined it is necessary and appropriate to retain a law firm to assist the university in the resolution of this
I'd like to make a motion to add item number eight to our agenda. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Move to a vote on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item has been added. I now move item number eight. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved. Item number nine is a...
Is a resolution of appreciation for Kevin Kim, and whereas the Honorable Kevin Kim was appointed by Governor Cuomo as a member of the Board of Trustees at the City University of New York on July 1, 2017, and whereas Mr. Kim served as the first Korean-American member of the Board of Trustees for seven years, and whereas Mr. Kim served as Chair of the Board of Trustees Audit and Compliance Committee, as a member of the Investment Subcommittee, a member of the Subcommittee on Diversity, Inclusion, and MWBE, a member of the Faculty, Staff, and Administration Committee, the Student Affairs Committee, and a member of the Executive Committee, and whereas Mr. Kim provided invaluable contributions to the university by ensuring effective leadership as a member of the Chancellor's Search Committee in 2018, 2019, Chair of the CUNY School of Law Dean Search Committee in 2021, Chair of the Stella and Charles Gutman Community College Presidential Search Committee in 2020 and 2021, and Chair of the Queens College Presidential Search Committee in 2019, and a member of the Queensborough Community College Presidential Search Committee in 2020. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the members of the Board of Trustees at City University of New York express their sincere thanks and deepest appreciation to the Honorable Kevin Kim for his passion, devotion, and outstanding service to the City University of New York, and be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees extends its best wishes for his continued success in all of his future endeavors.
I'd like to make a motion to add item nine to our agenda. May I have a second?
Second.
I'll move to a vote to add. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Item number nine has been added. I'd like to move item number nine. May I have a second?
Second.
Just in discussion, I'm going to miss Kevin. Kevin got to be a very good friend, a great colleague, brought a great perspective to this board, and it is one of the things that I will say, it is important, and one of the lessons from this, it is important, who's in the room when the discussions are held? I think that's very important. Kevin brought certain points to our attention. This board, in turn, understood and followed up, as well as just in, as our searches and other things went. I will miss Kevin. I will miss his perspective. You can tell him that I said that he, because he is no longer on the board, it means he does not get a break on the golf course, so I will still try and take that out on him, but I'm going to miss Kevin. He was a good friend and a great colleague. Would that, any other comments? Yes, sir.
He's still eligible to do searches.
Oh, no, absolutely. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Henry. Thank you so, absolutely, absolutely.
I think we all second your comments. Perfect colleague.
Any other comments? All right, we'll now move to a vote on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Excellent. That item is approved. The one thing I am going to do is to go back to the beginning. I am going to skip my comments. I'm going to skip my comments, and chancellor, if you have your comments?
Yes.
Go right ahead.
Yes. So, thank you, Chair Thompson. I won't look that way.
Don't be on the necessity to abbreviate.
Trustees, presidents, and happy to see everybody for our first Board of Trustees meeting of the 2024 academic year. I'm going to jump right in. Earlier this month, every high school senior in the New York City public school system received a letter informing them that there is a spot waiting for them at CUNY. We launched this project last year and strengthened the effort this fall, thanks to our strong partnership with the New York City Public Schools. Last week, I visited Brooklyn Tech High School with Chancellor Aviles Ramos, who is a proud CUNY graduate. We met with the students and personally handed them out the letters. It was a pleasure to meet the new chancellor and look forward to continuing the fruitful collaboration between our systems. Together, we are working to break down barriers in higher education emissions and smooth the way for every student to reach their full potential. As part of the College Application Month and Governor Hokel's statewide initiative to make the college application process more accessible, we are waiving application fees for all New York City Public Schools students throughout November 15. And for the last two weeks, the fee waiver will be open to students across New York State who will be applying to college as first-year students. I want to remind the board that when we did this last year, the application rate increased 385% as compared to the previous year. To make added efforts and impact on that, we began our campaign, our "Degree for Every Dream," and the second installment of our enrollment marketing campaign is now live on the New York City subway, the Long Island Railroad, Metro North Railroad, city buses, and path shelters, the Staten Island Ferry, thank you very much, terminals, New York City Transit trains, path trains, and digital highway billboards. It's gotten a bit of a makeover, I'm sure that you've seen it already, but the beauty and energy of the campaign is still pure CUNY, and it gives me great joy to see our students and it gives me great joy to see our students and graduates and our campuses featured throughout. We are also, for the first time, promoting our graduate and honors programs and CUNY as a research destination.
By the way, chancellor, just, not to interrupt, but to make a point, and as one who was in the past very critical, I'm speaking about myself, very critical about the advertising that we had in public. It is much improved over the last few years, and I will, I just wanted to make that point because, as I said, I was a huge critic of our old advertising. The new advertising is directed at New York students, or potential students. It is New York advertising, and it really is.
And kudos to Senior Vice Chancellor Maite Junko and the team. I remember that everything in that campaign is led, thought, and delivered through CUNY students. All right, so, thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Congratulations once again to our CUNY Reconnect, our incredible program to re-enroll New Yorkers who have previously paused their college education. We are now up to forty thousand reenrollments, and I want to thank the Speaker Adrian Adams and Councilmember Eric Dinowitz for coming to our Welcome Center a few weeks ago to celebrate the milestone. You will recall, the initial goal for Reconnect was to re-enroll twenty-five thousand students by this past summer, so we have vastly succeeded that program, and kudos to Vice Chancellor Vanessa Miento and her team for the work in that, in that area. As you also know, helping our students move towards fulfilling careers is a key priority of our administration and this board, and I could devote an entire presentation, but do not worry, it will not happen, to the good work that we have been doing in this space. For now, I will share some impressive benchmarks. More than thirty-one thousand employers, partners are actively recruiting in the CUNY system. Thirty-one thousand employer partners. Seventeen of the Fortune twenty-five companies and most Fortune one thousand companies based in New York City have hired CUNY students in larger numbers in the last year. The Spring Forward Program, which prioritizes students with no prior internship experience, grew by sixty percent during the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four. The CUNY Inclusive Economy Initiative, which places students into integrated academic and career advising cohorts and embeds industry specialists in their departments to build relationships with employers, served nearly three thousand five hundred students during the year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, and that's nearly five times as many students as we did when we launched the program the year before. Our initial data shows that students who engage with their inclusive economy advisors beyond the first meeting were three and a half times more likely to secure an internship, a paid one, or a job offer immediately after graduation. And ninety-seven percent of internships and full-time jobs of students secured to the CUNY Inclusive Economy were related to their degree. They got the job on what they were studying about. So, great, great work there. Happy to report that it's been another standout year for CUNY's research enterprise. We reported six hundred and seventy-two million in external funding for research and other sponsored programs in fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, an all-time record high for the university, and a six percent increase over the last year, which was the previous record for the CUNY's research foundation. Over the past decade, we have reported external funding increases of more than seventy-eight percent for research and other sponsored activities and programs. I was delighted to announce this news last month at the ten-year anniversary of the ASRC, which has itself attracted more than a hundred and thirty-two million dollars in sponsored research funding, fully reflecting the quality and quantity of our research enterprise. The ASRC embodies our intent to support and empower our local communities while also helping advance scientific knowledge for the public good. I am also excited to share that our School of Medicine, whose Sophie Davis Biomedical Education Program established at City College is celebrating fifty years this week, has been awarded nineteen point three million grant from the National Institutes of Health to create a health equity center. This is the largest grant ever awarded to CUNY by NIH. So, congratulations to Dean Green. This effort, led by the School of Medicine, the New York Center for Minority Health and Equity and Social Justice in Harlem, will become one of the twenty-four national research centers in minority institutions and will be the only center in the Northeast. It will address health disparities through scientific research and community outreach, especially in Harlem and in the South Bronx where deep health disparities persist. It will also train the next generation of health disparities researchers. And now for my landing round of great college ranking news. The Wall Street Journal rated four of our senior colleges among the top five, four of the top five best value colleges in the country, and five in the top ten. Baruch was named the nation's top value school. Hunter College, City College, and Brooklyn College were named respectively second, fourth, and fifth, and Queens College was eighth. These five colleges were also among nine CUNY schools named by Forbes magazine last month in its list of twenty-five colleges with the highest payoff, which judged schools according to their return on investment. The other four schools included were York College, John Jay, Lehman, and the College of Staten Island. In these two thousand twenty-five best colleges rankings, U.S. News and World Report named City College as number ten for social mobility among national universities. Six CUNY senior colleges ranked among the top ten North Region universities for social mobility with Hunter College at number one. And in a CUNY sweep, Niche magazine named all seven of our community colleges in the top twenty for its best community colleges in New York State with BMCC, Kingsborough, and Queensborough dominating the slots as one, two, and three respectively. Before we end, I know it's been a long meeting, but we have two new members, two new members of the CUNY community for him is their first board meeting, President Nancy Cantor from Hunter. Welcome to your first board meeting. And also Sasha Owen, our new Senior Vice Chancellor for Statute of Young Policy. Welcome to our first meeting. Welcomes bring joy, goodbyes are most mixed emotions, but I also want to publicly congratulate our university provost and Senior Executive Vice Chancellor Wendy Hensel on her appointment as president of the University of Hawaii system. This is, we have no opportunity to talk about the great influence that Wendy had in the system for the past two years. It's been a joy to work with you, and we have still some work to do in your time left here. But again, congratulations, Wendy, and I know that I speak for everybody here, thanking you for the work that you have done and your amazing leadership, and the colleagues at Hawaii are lucky to have you. And I was going to congratulate trustee Domboya, but that was done in the resolution before. So, I end with one, with two other things. We're talking about celebrating. So, those who are celebrating the Wali later this week, how do they feel? Good joy. We hope that you celebrate and enjoy. And election season is in full swing, and I'm happy to report that ten of our campuses are serving this week as early voting sites, and six of our campuses will serve as polling sites on Election Day. Throughout the CUNY Votes Initiative, we have promoted student voter registration, participation, and awareness, and I urge all our students and our entire community to exercise their civic duty and vote. In addition to that, we're going to come back and beat the Dodgers in the World Series. And that child sort of includes.
Thank you, chancellor. Let me, what I am going to do, there being no further business, I'm going to move to adjourn this and go into a quick executive session. So, we are adjourning our public meeting. Thank you all so much. We're going to have a very brief, like, ten-minute executive session. So, I'm going to move back into executive session. You're out of here. Thank you all. Thanks, everybody. Not at all.